... seller's use tax and abalorm taxes. For the past three years, I've kept the budget level and based on historical averages, I did make an increase, felt comfortable making an increase in fiscal year 2023. Um, this next chart shows the expenditures and it goes over basically by major function. Um, I know how we budget internally and without within all of the agencies, we budget by cost center or department, and this basically summarizes the cost centers and departments as required by the examiners of public accounts. So we have just a comparison of general government to a 2022 budget versus 2023 proposed budget. So you can see those totals there and um, we'll go to the next slide. And this is the balance of the uh, the expenditures by functional area. And you can see um, the amount that we have budgeted. And one thing I want to talk about capital outlay, we have um, capital outlay is not just the general fund, so we budgeted 2.5 million in the general fund and 2.5 million for public works in the budget for capital. Okay. Um, the next one is expenditures by function, excuse me. If you wanted to know um, of our total budget, um, what percentage is going to the major areas, you'll see that we spent actually 41% on areas that are considered public safety and actually our general government, mainly our operation or administration departments comprise 33% and the remainder is for capital investment and that is going to be um, discussed in a later slide. Okay, now let's get to the capital investment. These are the things that the commission really wanted to um, you know, really take our funds that we have accumulated over the last three or four years and really make an impact into the community and into uh, county facilities. The first one is the Mobile County Aquatic Center. Um, the Mobile County Aquatic Center is actually going to be um, really beneficial to our community. It is also going to be beneficial to the public school system and that we have a place for individuals' schools to have swim teams and maybe those that don't have swim teams, they can get swim teams. Um, the next thing is the Mobile County Soccer Complex. We are expanding the soccer complex um, to make that also a larger attraction, to have more tournaments and then um, to uh, improve the quality of the fields and make other expansions. Um, the Mobile County Golf Course and Waterfront Park, um, that is going to be renovating and bringing in full operation of the former Linksmann Golf Course. Um, Chickasabob Park upgrades and Mobile County Blue Way enhancements. Um, those are enhancements that were submitted um, to improve parks and park access and to improve the Mobile County Blue Way, just to enhance it. And then in reference to uh, the Africa Town Welcome Center and its Interpretive Center and Civil Rights Memorial Park, um, Commissioner Luggins has been working toward building a foundation of cultural assets that reflect the diversity of Mobile County's rich heritage and allow us to share local history through art, experiences, and information. Africa Town Heritage House is a key to these efforts. Okay, and then there we have $5 million in capital equipment. Okay, so how much is it? Um, the total cost of the major items in the budget are listed on this chart and the total cost is $50 million. And so how do we pay for the $50 million? Um, we have operating transfers from other funds and 85%, as I mentioned previously, is coming from our carry forward. One thing I did not include on the slide, now I know how I forgot it. The county commission is going to give a 5% COLA and um, our uh, we're also going to have the 2,500 non-recurring one-time benefit, you should receive that. I think Donna, October the 18th, I believe?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, and then we're looking to give the second one in November, the COLA in November, if we can get it.
The COLA payout would be reflected on the November 4th check.
Right, the November 4th check. So um, yeah, thank you so much um, for the commissioners for really um, assisting me and being really forward-thinking in the 2023 budget. I think it's a good budget, it's historical and um, you know, just appreciate all the elected officials, department heads, um, my uh, Deputy Director of Finance, Compliance and Policy Officer, everybody that spent time getting this budget together. Um, and hopefully everybody be pleased. Thank you, uh, commissioners. I appreciate you.
Thank you Dana and and also to all the members of your team in finance. I know that it's, you've burned a lot of midnight oil getting this ready. Y'all been busy this year, workday and budgets. But uh, know how much we appreciate it. I think this is a very good budget. I think not only the fact that we're able to provide the the COLA raises to employees who are who um, and I think that's certainly something that we're very glad to do and they deserve it, all of you deserve it. But this is also, you mentioned historical, this is a transformational budget because we've really focused attention on being able to do capital investments that will have long-term impact on our community and really help with providing a better quality of life and to help us stay competitive with other major urban areas of the state. So uh, I'm real pleased with the direction that we're we're going in and um, and again, I'm appreciative. If there are any questions, commissioners, or any comments?
No, I'd just like to echo the same. You know, it's, I know you guys work very hard all year round, but particularly when it comes real close to getting the budget out and I appreciate all the work that you and your office do to get that done. And also, again, I want to echo the uh, how pleased I am to be able to give employees uh, the other half of the promised bonus and also a 5% raise and also uh, not increase uh, or the county commission actually covering the cost of the increase in the, I can't think of a time, I was a county employee for a long time and I can't think of a time when we were able to uh, do a bonus, a 5% raise and also the commission cover the cost of the increase of the insurance and so that's a big deal for all of our employees and I'm
And that was about a six and a half percent increase, wasn't it, or something?
Yeah.
So the county will absorb that increase in cost on the health premiums.
So anyway, but thank you guys for all your hard work and you, you, you too as well for all your hard work on the budget and everyone really.
Yeah. Team effort here. Anything else? Okay, that's all said then. Thanks again and we will uh, have this presented on Monday's agenda for for a vote. Okay. Well done. All right. I guess we'll uh, move along and begin with the agenda.
Good morning commissioners. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting. Number two, approve the list of claims. Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance report. Number four, approve a lease agreement with the city of Mobile for use and benefit of the sheriff of Mobile County and the sheriff's posse for real property located at 6449 Moffett Road. Southwest portion for the non-escrien, script, excuse me, purposes for initial term of one year for an annual rent, $60 and by mutual consent, terminate lease agreement dated July 20th, 2004. Number five, approve payment of claims for home program in conjunction with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number six, approve agreement with the University of South Alabama Center for Forensics, Information, Technology, and Security for the internship program for students in the School of Computing and relating fields of study. Number seven, approve employment contract for Christina Malon-Hapcock as staff attorney for Mobile County Commission Legal Department commencing October 3rd, 2022 for a term of three years.
Is Christina here today?
She is not, but will be on Monday.
Okay. We'd be happy to see her.
Everybody knows we'll thoroughly completely miss Martha and Christina will take the position of John and my ass today is at the county commission, later an agenda approved John when Martha leaves as chief staff attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
And number eight, we need to hold a public hearing at the conference. Public hearing to receive citizens' comments about the 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAEPOR. For the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program, this report has been available to the public since September 9th, 2022.
This public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this matter? There being none, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Number nine, authorize adopt and submit the 2021 CAEPOR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number 10, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners in the amount of 1,800 from District 1 funds for its health science program. Number 11, approve appropriation contract with Fowl River Area Civic Association, amount of 15,000 from District 3 funds for a new ADA compliant handicap grant at Fowl River Community Center. Number 12, approve a sponsorship agreement with Fostering Together Golf Coast in the amount of 2,500 from District 1 funds to be used for its fostering hope celebration fundraiser. Number 13, approve professional services agreement with Susan J. Lee, MSRD LD for Food Services Management Services at Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year at the rate of $60 an hour, not to exceed 12,000 to be paid from the general fund. Number 14, approve professional services agreement with Lynn Young, MD for medical services at Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year for the total sum of 32,000 to be paid from this general fund. Number 15, approve a staffing agreement with Bay Nursing for provision of nursing services at Strickland Youth Center. Number 16, approve appropriation contract with Murphy High School Alumni Boosters in amount of 3,7636 from District 1 funds to be used to benefit the Murphy High School tennis team. Number 17, approve change order number one with Vision Southeast Companies, Inc. for micro square control access gate and fence installation. This change will provide dual license revenue access at each gate. If implemented, the change will increase the contract by 5,18111. The new contract total will be 97,48211. Number 18, approve event space rental agreement with Alba Shrine Center for specific hours on five days for pole worker training at a rate of $100 per hour. Number 19, adopt a Mobile County budget for fiscal year 2023 effective October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. Number 20, uh, needs to be voted at the conference and we need to add the word approved right before change. So the agenda item reads, approve change order number one with Norton Contracting Company, Inc. for project water main relocation at State Road 188 in Irvington by Yule Battery Highway for the addition of a 12-inch insertion valve valve and deduction of various other items. This change order will increase the contract by $24,060.
Commissioner Doan, I just want to tell you, Matthew knows that the utilities board of City of Yule Battery has agreed to vote for that. They voted on that this past Tuesday evening.
Number 21, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Chickasabob Park Disc Golf Improvements. Number 22, approve contract amendment number three to the Mobile County Park Initiative contract with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood LLC dated August 6th, 2021 to add task four bidding and construction services for Chickasabob Park Disc Golf and Trail Improvements.
There's a typo in Chickasabob.
Excuse me?
There's a typo in Chickasabob.
Is it missing a C?
We'll correct that commissioner. 23, approve request of the sheriff's office to add one internally purchased vehicle to their fleet as follows. The addition of this vehicle will not increase the fleet. Number 24, approve contract with Moffett and Nickel Engineers to provide engineering design services for Dolphin Island Causeway Shoreline Restoration Project. 25, approve employment contract for John Wesley Adams Jr. as staff attorney for, well, chief of staff attorney.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that change. My typo.
For Mobile County Commission Legal Department commencing October 1st, 2022.
No, you're not, we're just, I'll tell you what, you'll be two chief staff attorneys for a brief period of time.
Next item is to demote you. I'm just kidding.
This is commencing October 1st.
By no means is Martha being demoted.
When is your effective date of retirement? Okay.
She's being promoted then, she's retiring.
Lucky her.
That's right.
We will miss her terribly. She tells me she won't miss us though, at least not me or John.
Number 26, approve a one-time non-recurring benefit in the amount of 2,500 for all full-time employees and 1,250 for all part-time employees on payroll through October 14th, 2022, including employees in their working test periods as well as employees on military leave or unpaid leave, but not including unskilled laborers, provisional, temporary, supernumerary, or seasonal employees. The non-recurring benefit will be paid out on October 21st, 2022. 27, approve a 5% cost of living COLA for all employees effective the pay period beginning October 15th, 2022 and will be reflective in November 4th, 2022 paycheck. Number 28, consider the following action on bids. Number 29, approve professional services agreement with Dogwood Professional Production, Inc. and will capitalize that I on Inc. for website hosting and maintenance for the county commission in amount of 3,900 annually. Number 30, approve the lease of a 12-ton air conditioner with heater for Theodore Oaks from Sunbelt Rental from the current purchasing cooperative, Omnia Partners, in amount of 21,23296 for four weeks. 31, approve a renewal annual equipment warranty and software license with Nemo Q, Inc. in amount of 1,0847 for the revenue commission. 32, approve a renewal license subscription for Veronis with SHI International Corporation from the current purchasing cooperative Sourceware Technology Catalog Solution Contract in amount of 48,000 to 8801 for the county commission. Number 33, approve renewal of Murawki uh, subscription that maintains Wi-Fi access points for county facilities, a three-year agreement with coverage won in the amount of 11,16180 for the county commission. Number 34, approve purchase of a 23 acres of real property located at 2220 and 2224 Schillinger Roads South, Mobile County from the trust fund of Michelle Marie Arada Roberts and Wendellin Janay Arada Pilchro for the amount of 1 million, 1 million, 1.7 million plus closing costs and to authorize the president of the commission to sign all documentation related to the transaction pending final legal review.
What is uh, what will this property be used to do?
So um, this property backs up to West Mobile County Park uh, and it gives us, it'll give us, we'll do a lot of things, but one of the things it'll do to give access to West Mobile County Park from Schillinger's Road. And it'll also give us an opportunity to expand what I consider probably the premier park in Mobile, including the city. I think this will put us uh, right on track with uh, having a park pretty close to nice as Cottage Hill or Medal of Honor Park. As you know, we, we have approval for the uh, ARPA funding to put a splash pad and a playground in and we are, it was really in a cramped location because we're, you know, we, we already have uh, youth girl softball at that park and we're soon to have uh, youth baseball at that park, we have soccer at that park, we have football at that park and of course, we, in the last year, we've built a disc golf course. And so we were kind of getting cramped on space and this property was available and I think the commission in the past had uh, made some kind of uh, attempt to purchase the property.
In 2018, we, I found in my notes, on behalf of then county commissioner Carl, we had had some communication with the same ownership group about acquiring it and at that time they were not interested.
Yeah, so it just, it really gives us an opportunity to expand the park um, and not really increase the cost of the splash pad and playground, but to maybe give it a larger footprint and uh, give us an opportunity to maybe move some of the, because right now there's kind of a shared facility between the football and the soccer in the back, maybe gives us an opportunity to move one of them around a little bit and just really make it a, what I consider, I think it's a premier park in Mobile County and and Mobile period, but I think it gives us an opportunity to make it even better.
And Dana, am I correct, this will be District 3 funds subsequent to the approval of 2022-2023 budget?
Right, the funds that were budgeted.
It'll be district funds, yeah. Staff had asked me the source of it, I want to be sure I was correct with you in our conversations. Okay, well, just for the purposes of administration records, I just didn't have that yesterday. We won't close on this commissioners, probably till late October, mid-November, yeah, it's probably November. Surveys will be the only thing that will take a few weeks. Thank you.
Just so, just for the record, I think there was a ask for the property of 1.9 and a half million dollars.
Listed for 1,950,000.
Yeah, that's what it was listed for and with some negotiations, we got it for 1.7, which I think is an excellent uh, price for property in in that area of Mobile.
Good, okay.
Number 35, approve a contract with Alight Solutions to perform a review of the workday system implementation for human resources and payroll subject to a final legal review. Number 36, approve a one-year cooperative agreement between Mobile County, Mobile County Department of Human Resources, Alabama Department of Human Resources for the state of Alabama and the Accounts Department of the 13th Judicial Circuit Court for implementation of the child support enforcement program for 2023. Number 37, approve a purchase of 2.5 acres of real property located at 9645 Moffett Road, Sims, Alabama for the sum of 68,000 plus closing costs and authorize the commission president to execute all necessary documents related to the purchase pending final legal review by Jay Ross.
And likewise, this is commission district.
Right, commission district two funds, I didn't have that when we created the agenda.
And this is to expand the property around the Sims Senior Center.
Contiguous two and on the west side of it, be a nice addition. Okay, we'll, we'll probably close on that in sooner than November, we'll need you to do a survey on that too. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Number 38, approve sponsorship agreement with P.L. Wilson Detachment, number 447 Marine Corps League, in amount of $1,000 from District 3 funds to be used for its veterans' helping veterans car show event. Number 39, approve a project, ARPA 05 on 02-22, in amount of 500,000 for Yule Battery Water Distribution System for contribution, construction fees and water main relocation at SR-188 and Irvington Yule Battery. Number 40, approve a purchase of 10x election response software from 10x Software Solutions, in amount of 24,000 for probate court. We had one add-on. Number 41, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Act Strategic Spending Plan, approved August 1st, 2022 to revise the project awarded to the Veterans' Recovery Resources for renovation for a clinically managed detoxification and residential treatment program. The purpose of this amendment is to revise the approved scope of work for this project with no change in funding amount.
Al mentioned that I talked to Eddie yesterday and he may have mentioned to you that it may be our next um, general meeting that I'd like for um, Bulkert to come and give us a report, a status report on where we are and I know we have several uh, projects that are still in the queue and I don't know what the status of those are because and how close we are to releasing money to get some of these projects going.
Okay.
And that may be drawing legal or finance too, I don't know, but to kind of give us an update.
And we have an urgent care board meeting on Monday.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
Uh, that's it commissioner.
Commissioners, anything to add?
I think we have the engineering, engineering.
This is true, this is true.
Brian, do you have anything to add?
We'll just jump right over you.
Let me just say a special thanks from the sixth floor for the considerations that y'all made. Dana, thank you very much. Efforts. Item one, approve a signing contract for professional geotechnical engineering services for Lumpkin Road project. Commissioners, this is also going to be in our 2022 page go program. What we're trying to do is get a jumpstart on the design process, make sure we stay ahead of the school board for their two new schools out there. Item two, approve signing contract for professional engineering services for the same project, Lumpkin Road. Item three, approve right-of-way easement agreement for Track 7 on one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item four, approve right-of-way or easement agreement for Track 10 on one of our 2018 pay-as-you-go projects. Item five, approve right-of-way easement agreement for Tracks 19 and 20 on one of our 2014 pay-as-you-go projects. Commissioners, that's Dawes Road, the three-lane curbing gutter section that we're proposing from Cottage Hill Road Northward up to Jeff Hamilton. Item six, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds for the properties listed, projects listed. Item seven, approve supplemental agreement number three with McGinnis Corporation for the South Craft Highway Bridge for the addition of a modified junction box and grading reset and additional eight days of work time. Item eight, authorize to advertise and receive bids for Potter Track Road Triple R, which is one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item nine, approve the below-listed annual work orders to furnish labor, equipment, and materials as needed for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Did we include everything?
There's a lot of them. Item 10, approve the pre-application for 90% federal funding and 5% state funding for the Jeremindent Airport for fiscal year 2023. This seeks reimbursement for 95% of the Phase 3 construction costs for Jeremindent Airport for the bulkhead replacement. Item 11, authorize to amend the preliminary budget for Moss Aperod uh, from 30,000 to 75,000. Item 12, approve hold harmless indemnity agreements for fiscal year 2022-2023 for the use of county equipment from the following municipalities and the Moa Band of Choctaw Indians. Item 13, approve final plat of Hamilton Ridge Phase 1 and Hamilton Ridge Phase 2 and accept the right-of-ways, the road right-of-ways as shown on the subdivision plats for the following streets, Hamilton Ridge Drive East, Hamilton Ridge Drive North, Nadine Lane, Nadine Lane South, and Summit View Circle East and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance and accept the warranty deeds for the right-of-way indicated on the plats. Item 14, approve preliminary and final plat of Dakota Hill Subdivision, which is in District 2, and the preliminary and final plat of Hollis Hollow, which is in Commission District 2, and preliminary and final plat of Ashberry Estates, which is also in District 2, and preliminary and final plat of Miller Station, which is in Commission District 3. Item 15, approve the Mobile County Fiscal Year 2022 County Rebuild Alabama Contractors Report in accord with Act 2019-2, Rebuild Alabama Act. Item 16, approve Item sixteen, approve change order number one with Ben Radcliffe Contractor, Inc. for the Mobile County Soccer Complex concessions and restroom facility for the installation of an access road. Item seventeen, approve supplemental agreement number one with Southern Land Development, which is, uh, Grand Farms Road West for the addition of a gate, uh, to allow access to a drainage easement area. Commissioners, that is currently it.
Can I go back to number twelve?
Number twelve, okay.
Just, I didn't see them listed. Do we, do, uh, the hold harmless for the county equipment, does the city of Ballabatry not use?
They may, uh, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but this is the, only the cities that have returned the hold harmlessness, they're still doubled about.
Okay.
So we'll get those on as they return.
Thank you.
I thought they approved it, but I'll double check it to make sure they just did it.
And also, was there, um, I had an add-on, on the, uh, sponsorship to the, um, P.L. Wilson Detachment for the Marine. Was it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was on administration.
Okay, thank you. I missed it, sorry.
Okay, well, is there anybody else I've left out? Anything else? Okay.
I forgot to mention that Shree really came through for me at the, um, end to help get this done, so thank you, Shree.
Yes, thank you, thank you. All right, well, very good. Then, uh, if there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned until Monday.